Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming. Appreciate your interest in this subject. We have one subject on the meeting tonight. This is a special call meeting, and that is to discuss the parks and rec arrangement between the city commission and the board fiscal court. This being a special call meeting, by definition, it is a conversation between county officials and city officials. Should both bodies by majority vote decide to open a floor for comment, we will do so.
I'll second that.
Well, most in the debate, is it a second? There's a second. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
If we're gonna do this, it should be after the end of our discussions, our opening comments, what are we gonna do?
Not from the start.
Get it knocked out right now, and then we can determine when we want to open it up.
I think that's the more orderly approach to it.
Yeah, that's great.
That is.
So would you like to rescind your second or your motion?
I amend it.
To?
Discussion from the audience following our decision.
Well, that's what I said I would do anyway.
Yes, I second your suggestion.
I don't think we need it. I think what we say is we're gonna have a discussion, and then if there's still need for further input at the end of our discussion, then we'll do that. I just want to keep this thing under 12 hours. So with that said, what you're going to see before you in a moment via AV is a homogenization or hybridization, if you will, how about I just use the word combined, of the 1990 ordinance that the city adopted and the 1996 ordinance that fiscal court adopted. So we sought to blend those two together and see what of that is gonna be kind of an à la carte discussion. Let's go through line item by line item and say, yes, we're good with that, no, we're good with that, no, we're not good with that, and this is how we should change things.
Do we have?
You're gonna see just a minute, I'm gonna put it up here on the AV. Okay? Does that approach sound good with everybody? Okay. With that said, who's doing the AV work?
Oh, me.
Okay, me.
I didn't sound very excited.
Now, we're gonna need, those of us up here are gonna need to move.
Mr. Mayor, if you would yield to, to me, I'd like to take, have permission to lead the board and the commission through this discussion and try to explain to those in attendance what I've attempted to do.
Yes, sir.
I can use my voice. Can you all hear me? All right. We've been dealing with this subject for quite some time. And Commissioner Gay, in his first joint meeting, suggested that we had two ordinances that were already on the books, and it was very appropriate to be the guiding force to keep a joint parks and rec property alive in our community. So I asked a couple of commission meetings ago to be given the assignment to take the two ordinances, to walk through them line by line, word by word, and try to see if they still fit what we're trying to do in 2019. What I've also done is that you'll see in bold print where I put J. H. Atkins' touches to these two ordinances. I put past and current fiscal court members' suggestions into these ordinances. I put past and current Dammel City Commission comments into these two ordinances. And I've taken comments from those in the community who've been courageous enough to share information with us about how they think parks and rec should proceed in our community. So I welcome the opportunity just to walk us through this activity tonight. And I would say to my colleagues on the court and the commission that when we go through this, or as we go through this, if there's something you have a question about, or something you think needs to be taken out, then feel free to raise your hand, call that to our attention, we will stop. And if there's a consensus to take it out, we'll do just that. We'll have someone in the back to highlight it for us, and the next time you see these ordinances, that will be removed. If we go through and you see there's something that's missing that you think needs to be in there, and you are part of the court or the commission, feel free again to stop us, and we will put those items in there as well. The goal tonight would be, in my opinion, because I enjoy coming to these meetings, but my goal tonight would be that when leaving here, we will have a rough draft of a document that both the court and the commission, the commission and the court, will be, will have a gentleman's, or a gentleman's and a lady's agreement that we proceed forward with parks and rec with some type of a draft document tonight. It's my opinion that we're gonna have a joint agreement that we have two documents in the city and the county already in place to take care of what we need. And that's what my goal would be tonight, is to walk us through that and see if we can come to that conclusion. It's just four pages. I use size 18, 24 font, so really probably just two and a half pages, but I want to be sure as I did this, I could read it for sale. Again, I want to remind you that the things that you'll see in this, if they're not in bold print, then they're already in our ordinances. We're already supposed to be, we were supposed to be doing these items, doing these things. So I'm waiting on technology. But we passed ordinances, the city's is 1425, passed in 1990. The county's was 7.4.0, also passed in 1990. And then the city in 1998 passed 1549. I don't know the number for the county, but the county also passed more than 1998 as well. So we have two ordinances on both books. And also, somebody gave me a copy of the Kentucky Revised Statutes, 97.010 to 97.050. You'll find those things included. And then KRS 97.100 is also included in this draft proposal.
In all seriousness, yes, dang, you gotta make it bigger.
What's that?
I was about to ask to make it bigger.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, sir.
I think one thing that will help us here greatly is if we kind of go into this with the right mindset. And I'd like to, when we have these discussions, let's really think about a certain individual that was a huge part of parks that we just lost recently. And Mr. Kokonhour, blood, sweat, tears, recently passed away. So let's make sure that as we're having this discussion, we keep his memory in our hearts. And I think if we do that, I mean, he was a true servant of this community for parks and rec. So let's please make sure that while we're having these discussions, we really think about that. And I think it'll help us kind of guide us, and he might be up there helping us as well.
That's a great saying, because I would probably say that in his absence, as he looked down upon us tonight, that he has been successful with the work that he has done because of the fact that these ordinances were in place. So yes, I think that's a great saying. So you see the 15th of March, I wanted to get this done because I knew I had some time to be out of town, and I wanted to sort of start the draft. Notice it says draft. But A, B, and C. Already in our local ordinances, notice that KRS 97.100, well, we have not included that in our local ordinances. And then I just took the privilege of saying that if we're gonna do this, we might as well put that all, such all phrase in there as that. Any future amendments to these ordinances, our statute is also to be included in this document as well.
Do you want discussion now?
If there's a need, so, yeah.
I do. I have that statute in front of me, and it actually reads from 97.100 to 97.240. And a couple of concerns, it is city only. The language of that particular area, all of 100 to 240, excludes any discussion of counties. Number two, it gives far beyond, if you're pool, there's not pooling ideas, but a swimming pool. It reads golf courses, tennis courts, bridle paths, swimming pools, bathing pools, and other similar projects made available to the public for recreation, and it goes on. It's very inclusive and sounds like a whole lot of money.
Well, and notice I just put the word pool up beside that because I think that's the part that really involves what we have in place right now. And I just put the 97.100 because that gets the conversation started. It's in bold, it's an addition.
But my great concern is the statute excludes counties.
I agree with you. I agree with you, and that's been part of the issue, is that the statutory authorization for pools and that laundry list that you mentioned, actually only cities are authorized by statute to run them. So, and any joint board would be in contradiction to the statutory authorization. So...
So Mr. Ellis and Mr. Dexter, to move us along, we all agree that that's a part of just the city's prerogative, that it might be at this point where we say we're gonna take KRS 97.100 to pool operations and all those other things you...
The title line, please.
Take it out of the joint agreement.
Yeah, and my only point is that we can, we can deal with those issues on a service agreement between the parties as opposed to a venture of the joint city-county board. It can still be achieved, but just in a different manner.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it probably needs to be left in, just in the all-inclusive kind of category. Because, you know, again, funding is always, the funding agreement and the agreement that Attorney Dexter is talking about, that's where it all kind of rubber meets the road. But I think we need to leave some breadth in this discussion to incorporate a lot of future possibility of parks and rec endeavors.
Could you please pull it down so we can see the title line again?
Oh, I'm sorry. Title line says...
To me, that means that we're in with anything that might happen, including money. We the county.
I would say yes, you're probably right, but I'm saying, I can't say yes to that right now because we haven't agreed to anything. All we're doing is working our way through a draft proposal. And notice I said that's in bold, so that means that it's an addition to what's already been approved?
I understand.
Okay, so that right there, if we were to approve this all tonight, it would have to be with an approval with the additions. So we're not approving anything right now, we're just working our way through it. If you want to take the KRS 97.10 out of there so we can move on, that's fine. That's why it's in bold. I'm not trying to hide anything, I'm trying to call it to your attention.
Or add by service agreement.
Yeah.
And then it's be satisfactory.
Mr. Donald, you take some, take some notes for us, some notes for one of yours. Do you want to do that, Mr. Ellis?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to take City Management, City Attorney Dexter's suggestion about adding something beside your pool or beside KRS 97.100? I don't want it.
I'm only one vote.
Okay.
I see things that could be very problematic.
Since you said you're only one vote, and now in respect to your one vote, I'm gonna move us along, okay? Next paragraph, please, Mr. Polo. You can read that for yourselves, and the bold part is that I've included in there that if we agree to this, that we will be willing to assist with public work activities when it's cost-effective or cost-effective, but take care of our parks. That's not in the ordinance, that's something that's been added into this by J. H. because of conversation with lots of different people. Okay? And then the next paragraph says the board will report to the commission and the court every few months.
I have a question, just for clarification, do you have an example of what that might include?
Well, I think, I go back to last summer, the Eagle Scout Program project. The guy was doing the Eagle Scout Program, we've had county facilities management, and we had city public works to assist with that project. Rather than pay somebody on the outside to do it, we got the project started for him and saved, I think, nearby a lot of money. It just says one appropriate, right? Okay. This whole paragraph is bold because it's totally new. It says the commission and the court will hear reports from the Parks and Rec Board every two months. And then notice I'm saying that in April and then October, there's gonna be joint city and county meetings that the board's gonna come report to. And then it says these updates shall be provided by the board chairman and by the director of Parks and Rec. That's all new, but I think, again, some of you all said that in our presence several times. Yes, sir?
You're gonna hear it from me all evening long.
That's okay.
Assisting with public works activities when cost-effective. And up above there, it says shall. Folks, that's money. If a decision is made, that's a potential for significant tax dollar money.
Well, it's a savings of the system, because we've been, we've been, we've been, we've been hiring somebody outside to do it, and it's not anything new.
I'm talking about structures.
What was that, Jim?
I'm talking about new structures.
Oh, then say it again. It says with public works activities, which is quote-unquote undefined.
That's my problem.
Well, it's not a problem, because if something is, if something comes before the court or the commission, not a dime is spent until the court or the commission approves it. This just says it gives the board a chance to come to us and say, hey, can we, we got this project going on, can you guys help us save a nickel or dime by doing some little work with your public works department? Go ahead, it's something we've been doing for years, but...
Yeah, that's where, yeah, that's where Earl and Dwayne have been kind of coordinating in kind, if you will. That's kind of a lot of times they're defined that way, I don't know if that's the correct term. But the use of the public works department to do work in the, in Millennium Park primarily.
Can you refute that this could be six new tennis courts?
No, I can't refute anything, because I was...
That's my problem.
Excuse me, Mr. Ellis, I'm gonna use your own statement against you, I'll dispute you. I have one vote. I have one voice tonight. My voice tonight is to try to get us through this document. Okay, but I'm not concerned about assisting with public works activities because it says, we shall, you know, and say we will. Any new project that comes before the court by Parks and Rec or by any other agency at this city and county, we decide where we're gonna spend our money on it.
What Tom's saying is the fact that work activities, is the fact that y'all decide to build a pool, y'all decide this and that, that says that we're gonna be part of it.
That's why 97.1 is inserted in there. Because that, that KRS language excludes, by statute excludes the county. That's why we put it in there.
So I move on.
Trying to help you.
Yeah.
All right. I think it made this a lot simpler.
I keep moving.
I think it made a lot simpler what you're going through, but that's fine.
Well, we're trying to make it a lot simpler, because the problem with not doing it this way is that there's all kinds of rumors out there. Well, what we should not be doing.
You're adding another board, and you're doing all this and that.
No, I'm not a board.
The board is the Parks and Rec.
You're naming more members, you got three city...
I'm not naming anything yet, let's go on.
Okay, but we're not alone.
Remember, the word draft means it's a proposal. All right, let's go on. Now, let's sort the rest of that out. A little bit more?
Pull up?
No, go down, I'm sorry. Yeah, notice it says new, says new proposed additions. The board by ordinances is defined right now, it says that we have board members who serve four-year terms. Notice it says in bold, is there a need to set limits? I heard that from somebody in these discussions, so I put it in there. But right now, we have three city appointments, three county appointments, and one joint appointment. And we also have ex officio, too, one commissioner and one magistrate. That's in the law right now, we just haven't been doing it. Then I heard from some discussions earlier that we should consider having a junction city appointment and a curable city appointment. And with voting rights is what my proposal is, is you're gonna have them come to the table and let them vote. And also put a note, if somebody says, well, shouldn't they make a mandatory contribution? I don't know that, that's not my, that's not my decision to make, but it's serious so we can think about it. This is something new, but it should have been, well, something new, let's go on. Any questions about that? There goes from seven members to nine members. And it goes from nine members with only seven have the authority to vote. They've been doing all this, that's their exception, want to make sure we know that they're four. These chairpersons, secretary and treasurer still remain the right to vote as part of the party.
Just a technical correction, the first line, it should read corporation as the statute does.
All right, so now I'll make that correction.
Grammar's not even correct.
Okay, that's okay. Yeah, well, I should say, let's, let's...
That, you were basically saying we're pretty much just, you're just clarifying the chairperson, secretary and treasurer as voting members, and otherwise it's gonna be as it is in the document.
Yeah, well, that first half of that line where he's directing, you remember, see that's not in bold? That's exactly the way it is in our ordinances right now, okay? But he's proposing...
And that first part, the first line there, and that's the way it is now, or not?
That's the way it is right now. The only part that's been changed is the part that's in bold.
I think the language actually says a body corporate. So I think the word body may be missing, or I think it says body.
Yeah, there's an error.
Would you change that, would you put that down as an erection for me? All right. The next one says the board shall operate using the open meetings requirements. The board should publish an agenda, provide an opportunity to hear the public. These are all bold, so these are things that are not in the ordinances, but things I've heard all of us mention at different times. And then the thing that should attend three per se meetings without pause will be grounds for dismissal, not a commissioner, not a courtroom, but these are for the, this is all for the board, Parks and Rec Board. They're volunteers, remember. The board shall operate as a special purpose government entity. The board should use all procurement procedures. Those are in bold, so those are all new suggested additions coming from members of the court and the commission and from the public.
Just a typo correction, is the special purpose government should be an entity. All right? Just with an E.
With an E? All right. What's that?
Governmental as well.
All right. Madam Pete, you get it, is?
All right. We're making good progress.
You all are reading this, so you're making some corrections, that's great. Treasury being bonded, is there any there? Paying and including attorney, I don't know if that's been done, now the word options is there because the court and the commission has several options about how to get that done. That's where I got options, so we can think of some different ways to get that done, rather than just with our attorney.
Point four?
Yes, sir.
In the statutes, 97.035, there's a very clear line that needs to be in one of these bullets somehow. Creation of a joint board...
Mr. Ellis, would you wait till we finish then suggest that?
I don't think we can wait, it's too important to this particular section.
All right, well, read it out loud so Donald can...
Creation of a joint board representative of the subdivisions involved and possessed with all the powers and duties of KRS 97.010 to 97.050. That's the crux of who is going to be in charge of making major decisions. And this says it's not a single entity of government, it's not the city or the county, and it's the board that has all power and duties under the statutes.
The Parks and Rec Board?
Yes.
But where, but they can't do anything unless they've got the funding to do it.
I understand that completely.
So would you read, would you read that again, I'll let you stick it there, try to get captured out of it?
Yeah, I'll actually take a picture and send it to you if you want me to.
All right, that'd probably be better.
Yeah, that'll be quicker.
Okay, that will be, all right. And you like to add that some places about what the board shall do? Okay, that's fine. That means I'm getting nervous. No, no, I mean, I'm ready to dance, right? Okay, let's go on then.
On the, on the options, real quick, of the attorneys. Do the city attorney and the county attorney, are they able to provide legal counsel for our special governmental entities?
Well, that's an interesting question, I haven't thought through that entirely. However, I do think it's possible that that would be a role that the county attorney and whoever's city, and a rural city attorney could share on maybe a rotational basis or something like. I think that might actually be healthy.
Well, I put the word options there, because several people talked about that one. I don't know if Parks and Rec Board currently has an attorney. You all would love to have one, right?
They do not, and in the past, there have been, there's been council retained in specific times for specific purposes. But for budgetary reasons, it's my understanding that it, that council hasn't been required to attend all the meetings, but kind of attended when asked to attend.
Okay, that gives us some options, okay, let's go on then.
Hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. The board shall provide, maintain, operate parks. That should be Millennium Park.
Well, wait, you...
We're not gonna provide money for parks.
Okay.
Period.
Well, again...
When Millennium Park was built...
Let me have you up, sir, first of all, let me have you up.
Give me one second.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, say what you have to say.
When Millennium Park was built...
Yes.
There was only two or three of us in here that know what's going on. But the city and the county agreed at that time that we close these other little parks and make... I'm telling you, I've got proof right here with me.
Isn't it?
Well, Tony Waller, am I right or not?
The actual partnership agreement, once the property was purchased and we were gonna commit to develop the park, was that at the time, a lot of the neighborhood parks in Dammel then would revert to passive stats. And then all the recreational activities then would be focused and centered on our multi-dimensional regional park. And that's, that's what was to happen then. And it was understood by the city of Dammel that that was their responsibility.
So, so, right, so the answer moved again, well, let me, maybe I should put it up this way. Notice that that's not in bold? So if that's in there in proper, it's in our ordinances. And I think that's the way Parks and Rec has been operating. If you want to take the S off of operating a park and make it a park, that's fine. Notice in bold, I put trails in there because we have that come along since we've had these ordinances.
I'd like to change that part.
Can I finish my statement first?
Go ahead.
I got all these places that identify as recreational facilities in city and county. And I did that on purpose, because I thought that'd be the first place we would stop tonight. So what I suggest is that, it says currently but not limited to that. So if there's anything on that list that somebody wants to take out of this ordinance, then it's a time to suggest that.
Okay. This operate parks, parks and playgrounds should be taken out. It should be, the board shall provide, maintain, and operate Millennium Park.
Okay, now, that's one person's suggestion, so that's a major one right there, so I think we'll just stop right here.
The desperate aid into the park board, every thing that's out there is a park board.
That's right, I agree with that, yes.
That's what, I mean, that's what we're doing there.
Yeah. So by...
I know, but if we agree to this, they'll say, well, my God, y'all agreed to the park, it's a park.
Yeah.
We need to one park.
In 1990, 1998, somebody agreed to it, that's why I accept it, I'm not changing that at all. So, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we change that, maintain and operate Millennium Park.
All right, is there, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
All right. It's been properly moved, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not in position to carry a motion, Mr. Mayor, would you carry a motion?
Well, motion's made and signed, we're in discussion.
So...
I have a question. You go ahead.
Okay. So you, so the county is basically saying you only want money spent in the Millennium Park?
That's all we are gonna spend.
Okay, but you realize that all of these parks are in Boyle County?
Certainly.
Even if it's in the city?
And do you realize that EMS and the jail and the humane society is all... And do you realize that EMS and the jail and the humane society is all in Boyle County too?
This is the Parks and Rec meeting, so that's what we're gonna talk about.
What's your name, good?
Come on, Phil. Yeah. Come on, yeah. That's why we're having this discussion. Mister Kaywood?
If I'm hearing you properly, then you're saying that the Parks Committee only works for Millennium Park? Am I hearing that? That's the motion, right?
That's the motion.
That's the motion, yeah.
That's right. That's what the board's set up for.
But I believe taxpayers throughout the whole county pay taxes in order to use these other parks. And I also believe that the recommendation of the consultant is that we need small parks scattered out within the county. I believe that's what I read, is that correct?
Well, I don't know what you read, but I'm not agreeing that the county, that the county pays a dime on these other parks.
Read.
I'm not your decision, John, and I'm not.
No, I'm trying to be fair. I don't want, I don't want somebody who lives in the county to go into Jackson Park and feel like that they have to pay a fee.
How many people from out in the county are gonna come to Jackson Park, John?
I don't, I don't know.
No, you know, that are not coming.
They come to the convenience center. They come to the convenience, and there's no charge for that in the summary of.
Since we're in the discussion.
We'll vote, we'll vote.
Since we're in the discussion, period. Um, everything that I, and, and as subcommittee member, I've really been delving into this greatly, about a dozen different documents. And everything up there, to my knowledge, is inside or at the perimeter of the city, being this circle, this big geographically. And the county is this big geographically. My folks on average in District One would drive eleven to twelve miles, as much as sixteen plus miles, to go to anything, actually, twelve or fifteen miles, even get to Millennium Park.
That's not, no, I, I agree with that. We have a, we have a motion, oh, you know the topic?
Yeah, I would, uh, you know, I guess my concern is, it goes back to the fact that I really think that a lot of these issues can be settled in how we structure the funding agreement. I keep going back to it, all comes down to the funding agreement. So rather than striking these out completely, I think they can be addressed in a, a funding agreement, what's the term?
A service agreement.
Service agreement, thank you.
Many ways, long as.
The service agreement, because, for example, we currently, in the current budget, we jointly fund Millennium Park, and in that line, it pretty much incorporates the operational expenses of the Parks and Rec Department are also included in Millennium Park, and we jointly fund that. And then we currently, there's also a line for the fitness center, which we fund currently fifty-five percent county, forty-five percent city. I think there's some discussion and debate, that's, that's always a part of the funding, um, process. And then the pool is also its own line, and we fund that in that fifty-five percent, forty-five percent formula. So that's the current structure, so those items are in there. My belief is that you can leave all of the parks under the, uh, purview of the Parks and Rec Board, which is a county joint, city-county, Parks and Rec, um, endeavor. And again, everybody that lives in the city of Danville, and that several of us represent those constituents as well, live in the county. And we need to then, the other fundings, as far as just the general maintenance, mowing, day-to-day operation of those other miscellaneous parks in the funding or service agreement, fall on the city to take care of those through the funding agreement. If, in working with the new Parks and Rec Director, we determine that there are programs that are occurring in those, what we consider city-owned parks now, and they do become more active parks in the fact that maybe there's flag football, maybe there's, um, baseball, softball, soccer games, other things that are occurring in those parks, then in future funding cycles, that budget discussion can be had. Because through all this, my goal is that we focus on having the best Parks and Rec system that we can, working together, that we can afford to have, and that's the most important thing, is we, we have to, it has to be something that we can jointly afford.
But there's no way that we can afford all these little parks.
Well, we're not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, I'm saying that through the service agreement and the funding agreement, we determine where, where those are funded.
And let me speak to it, because the master plan by Branstad has been brought up a couple of times already. If we got even close to their recommendations, we could triple the number of employees. I don't see that happening. And we could be spending another one point three million plus on top of the eight hundred and ninety-six thousand plus. In other words, we could theoretically be doubling the money, and where is that gonna come from? And then in the ten-year plan that the city manager wrote up in his column, uh, I think it was back on the ninth, he's talking about a nine million dollar increase, seven point five being below Milton Millennium, every other parks.
Let me, let me address that by my mic. We, we all, we all, we all have to have goals and objectives. That doesn't mean that you don't alter them along the way, that, that may mean you never get to those goals or objectives. It may mean we can never afford those things. But you at least have to have something out there that says, we're, we're, we have been given a report that gives us, uh, some goals to shoot for. What we wind up being afford to, what we wind up being able to afford every year is what's gonna get done.
And, uh, Mister Mayor, the us, uh, is defined as Boyle County and Danville.
Absolutely.
Uh, I'd like to call for the question on the motion, so we can move along.
Can we have some clarifications there? I, I believe, I think it'd be most appropriate the court vote on that motion. I don't know if the commission needs to be a party to that. There's a second, first and a second by the court to remove, uh, that language as it pertains to Boyle County and not the city of Danville. So I think the fiscal court members need to vote, but the city commissioners need to abstain.
I agree.
And again, on that, if I could just speak then to the court, um, I would ask that we think about that, because again, I, I really wanna see this as a broadly-based Parks and Rec system that is, um, we don't have to fund any of that, and that's where, again, we can structure that through the funding agreement, but I would hate to see us forever eliminate, um.
We're agreeing to it up there, Mister Gay. If we leave it like that, the board will provide, maintain, and operate parks.
Well, and the other. Right, and the other thing I would encourage us to do is also hear, hear this proposal all the way out and really truly not vote on anything tonight, and have time to digest the document.
He's asking us to strike out and insert as we go along, am I correct?
Oh, if, if that's your pleasure, sir. Wait, wait, if it's my pleasure, you wouldn't strike, uh, take out anything? But that's not, you know, if it's my pleasure, but no, huh?
But I would rather us, uh, have a chance to hear this out and digest it, and then come back with what we wanna strike, rather than striking things on the fly here.
Okay.
Please, you.
Thank you.
And conditional, um, no funding, I'll withdraw a second.
Well, okay. To, 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 to address your motion, uh, not just preventing removal. I know, but Constitution Square Park needs to be called to your attention, and all trails in the city and county need to be called to your attention. And then the Junction City Park also needs to be.
And if I could make a comment.
I've got a question mark beside that, 'cause I really don't know who the owner of that, yes, sir, Commissioner, sir.
You guys, uh, were talking about.
Can you speak louder, please?
Sure. I'll even stand up. We're talking about, uh, the county, um, not using some of these parks. I think you need to ask some of your residents, this golf is sitting in Jackson Park, and most of the folks that use it are either county residents or auto-county residents, and the trails are being used by everybody. So I think you need to do a little polling before you decide Millennium Park's the only park being used by residents from any county.
Mister Kaywood?
I'd just like to remind, I, you know, when I write my check at the end of, at the end of the year, I believe the county gets some of the money. But anyway, 'cause I live in the city, but I pay county taxes too. I think we have to keep in mind, you probably, you may or may not have had Millennium Park at the time that you had it. If it wasn't looked at at that time in, uh, uh, history. It was done specifically, pretty much specifically for economic development. Because we, in order for us to be competitive, we had to be, have a park system, because companies that looked to where they were gonna move to, looked to see what kinda recreation you had. That's why, that's really where Millennium Park came out of. Tony, is that accurate?
Well, it was an element, yes.
It was a strong element, folks.
Well, it really, but it doesn't. But the main, the main clamor was for a multi-purpose recreational.
Period.
I understand it, but economic development going forward, which I think is still in the play today, is still a part of the thinking process and understanding our parks and recreation.
Great, it's a great asset.
Please, please understand that this bullet, uh, is word for word out of our current ordinances and stuff, the word trails. It is in bold, all that's already there. Let's move on to the next.
Can, can I?
Yes, sir.
So, while I understand why it wasn't done, I would have loved to look at this draft prior, 'cause I think that would've helped with a lot of.
I'm sure the commissioners would be able to.
But, but, but I think a bigger part before, something else we really need to digest is, is maintain and operate parks. We're talking about that a ton. We don't know the financial impact, what the city pays to maintain and operate, and that would be a vital piece of information for us to have.
That's why I conditioned my withdrawal for my second.
Understanding. In orders, in order for us to even consider this, we really need to know that as you guys, not that I see us going here, but as you would like to know what White Park and Constitution Square as well. And to kinda go back to your point about Jack, Jackson Park, the, the survey itself even said it was underused, so, uh, and that's what we're finding with a lot of these smaller parks, underused and under-maintained. Um, and to ask the county to kinda come in, um, now that we wanna try to revitalize things, you know, it's kinda like, it's almost like we're flipping a park, you know, we gotta come in and spend a lot of money to make that thing nice. Um, but the, the study that we all keep talking about here, that was from, from the city, you know, it, it does go in to say that one of the public opinion surveys said ninety-nine percent of the people visited Millennium Park. And so it, it is something that I think the county and city needs to concentrate on, because it's vital. You know, I could see the possibility of economic development, but we haven't seen the result of that. Um, you can, you can figure that out by the Panasonic signs still sitting out on the softball fields. And then Constitution Square was the second one. So, um, but ideally, I would like to have numbers on, on costs of what it takes to maintain, 'cause asking us to go from two parks, or actually one park, and, and we have Constitution Square, uh, and, and White Park, to, to a whole big amount of parks, we really need to have the numbers.
Yeah, and that's where I still come back to, and I appreciate your point and everybody's point, 'cause I don't disagree. I don't want y'all to hear me saying that any differently. I don't disagree, but I think we need to focus on that can be built into the funding agreement. So that's where I, I don't wanna get us sidetracked by getting lost in the weeds, so let's, let's stay focused on the funding.
Agree with your point here, but as other communities have done without the throughout state of Kentucky, where they have a joint, you know, for a larger park with, with the county and the city, you know, there are other counties that, I mean, other, other areas that will maintain smaller parks as well, that, that the city basically does. Because the last thing that we need is more finger pointing when, and when the, the city says, hey, we wanna put this on, it's gonna cost X amount of dollars, which I think is what, uh, you know, Tom and, and Phil are kinda getting to. You know, we, we don't want to go back to this back and forth, where the city wants to do this, but the county won't fund it. And so while I understand your funding agreement, I see the potential of problems. And the one thing I think anybody in this room, in this county can agree, is we need a more harmonious relationship, because the economic piece doesn't really help when we're all fighting, so.
If we could consider, the board shall provide up to a maximum threshold agreed upon in dollars.
Well, let's, let's look at the, let's look at the draft and go from there, 'cause it is a draft.
Let's look at the whole thing.
We can, we can, at that point, I'm, I'm sure Mister Atkins would be happy to, to share it with us, and then we can kinda discuss it.
I wanna see this, so.
This is somebody that ordinance currently re.
I understand, but, but if we're gonna talk about funding outside what we've done, we need a phrase up there.
As, as we saw throughout the current ordinance, there's also mistypes as well.
There's a major, there's a major F Y I that needs to be shared right now, I think, too. If you look at funding that's been received by Parks and Rec, uh, from the city and the county, and all the capital expenditures here recently.
Mary.
I think you've gotten all of your, uh, you've answered your own question, it's all been geared towards Millennium Park and the popular vote.
But what Jason is mentioning is the unknown of fourteen other parks.
Yeah, but it's not unknown, we can surely get that to you. We got our financial offset, plus, he was back there, anyway, we can get that to you. Well, that's, yeah, and, and, let's go on then.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
You know, we're concerned about these other parks.
Yes, sir.
How much money has, uh, has the county spent on these other parks? Other Millennium Parks?
I, I don't, I can't answer that for you.
I mean, have they spent money on it, or have they not spent money on it?
I can't answer that for you, but we'll get that for you. I think I know the answer, but I don't, I don't wanna.
Answers probably. I think you'd be interested to know what the hell the county has spent on these other parks.
All the other parks, we, that's, yeah, I, I.
But basically, we've spent, we're gonna spend our money on Millennium Park, that's where everything comes from, so.
And, and, and that's why we're meeting, because if that's, if that's the county's decision.
Well, I shouldn't say this, but, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go there.
Go ahead.
I, I, I have an answer.
Desire's a better word.
I have, I have.
I like that thought, go ahead.
Yeah. Let's go. Um, the next bullet says straightforward ordinance. Um, and I just added director of parks and rec, 'cause I think, uh, all those other terms that are parks, superintendent, playground directors, supervisors, recreational superintendents, uh, our, our focus needs to be added, and that is the park, director of parks and rec, that's the term we used in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the next one says, this is not in there, surprisingly enough, it's not in there, but the board should develop policies, procedures, and job descriptions for all positions.
Amen.
I don't know why that's not in there.
Right, sure, but.
The next one is in there, except I took that fifty-fifty in there, 'cause I didn't know a better number to put in there. But it says the board will be financed and equal shares by the commission and the court annually. I'll let send there, except the fifty-fifties in bold, so I didn't know the correct percentages, I don't think anybody knows them really, but.
I noticed in reviewing all the documents, that all of a sudden the word commission comes in. Did we define that at the front end part? Because it just popped up. I understand, but I don't think it was defined that way, and certainly not in all caps, when I was reviewing the materials.
What, what is it all caps? Fifty-fifty?
Commission. Oh, and the terminology changed.
Well, again, that's me doing that, because it's my document, I just roughed it out. But now, the word you ought to be focused on in that statement is the word equal. I can do a thing with that, I tried to put that in all caps, but it's not in the document that way, but it's been in there all these years, it says equal shares. So let's go on. Says vacancies we, we fill, that's all in there. And I put that thirty to sixty days of receiving notice and said vacancies on the board, 'cause I'm sure they will learn to have somebody replaced as soon as possible. And we've gone long routes of town without replacing vacancies on the Parks and Rec Board. Notice I said we. Um, the board shall submit the budget, says February first, I've changed it to March fifteenth, 'cause I looked at our budgetary process, that probably makes a percent. And that would give them a chance to get it done before we had, if we pass this thing about having a joint, reading it equal for budgetary processes.
And just in defense of the board, it's my understanding that they have the, that, that guideline that has been submitted to budget by.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm, yeah, no, no, I'm not saying, no. Again, it's all in, that's right, yeah. Questions about that one?
Well, I, I think Jamie's point's kind of, kind of important, because the, the board kinda gets beat up a lot on the things that they don't do, and it's important to make sure that we recognize that they do a good job.
And I, and I'm sure we all appreciate that comment, but now remember now, the board's been beat up for the last year and a half, because they don't have any guidance from us at all. Not individually, but we're doing this because we're trying to give them the guidance. And this is, this is what they've been abiding by, are trying to abide by, except they haven't been getting this kinda support from the commission that they needed. Let's go on. Notice I said an annual, joint annual meeting, and that's the April joint meeting, 'cause that'll protect us with the budget thing, the audit is coming. because that'll protect us with the budget thing, the audit that's coming, and also, and deciding how we're going to make financial contributions to the Parks and Rec. Uh, the board shall have an annual, what?
Doesn't the state go beyond finance to performance in other fiduciary areas?
Which is something like the one that says financial audit conducted by?
Yeah.
It says, ensure with the court and commission.
Now fees and all sorts.
Well, again, I, I'm just pulling for what we have approved in this city and county.
But that would exclude other investigative things that the state might do.
Okay, so you may just leave it more broad by just leaving it as an annual audit.
I'll leave that out.
Take the word in financial.
Because it has to be financial, by law.
Did you make a comment, make a note about that, Ms. Pete?
Well, I think, I think you would need to consider that there are different types of audits.
That's correct.
Are you auditing simply a general ledger, um, with the expenses into the budget? Or is it more of a review of policy and procedures and controls? Because, well, they're, they're very specific types. And I'm not going to say I know the differences between the ones, but there are different types of audits, um, to various expenses. And I think the court and the commission should decide to what level of audit you would expect to receive.
Is that what the SPGE does?
Yeah, I think that's-
I mean, the SPGE already is an entity that if they're an SPGE, they have requirements to fulfill, and a certain type of audit is outlined.
They do, but the city and county could ask that there be a higher level audit that's performed, certainly if it's their board.
But that would limit it without the, would not limit it if we didn't make that change.
Well, it says conducted by CPA. Yeah, that's-
But you would just limit it to financial if you leave the word in.
I think it's better just to leave it broad than-
Say that? Did you make a note to strike the word financial? I, if that's the consensus of everyone. Okay. Huh?
Should it still say CPA then? That's the old line?
That's the line of the target.
He would add in financial.
All drafts and disbursements, signed by treasurer, the designated second member, and, uh, in some of our discussions, I heard the chair being the second person, or I heard the director being the second person. So I just put those in there as suggestions. Key word is to have the second person sign them. And there's all financial records, either audited or public accounts for the Commonwealth. It's not bold, which means it's already in the-
Can I ask a question on drafts and disbursements? It's my understanding right now that mostly everything has to go through the city manager before payment. Is that, is that correct?
Shouldn't be.
No. Pay your bills, pay your own bills, right?
Yeah, no, we pay our own bills. I don't, I just go talk to Michelle once a month and just show her what, what's in our bank account, what, what bills we paid for, our payroll went, um, and that just started nine or ten months ago.
Okay.
Just kind of while you've been directorless, while you've been directorless?
While, um, yes.
Joe Captain. Do, okay, so now that a director is hired, is that something that you're going to still have to do?
That would probably be something that the director would have to talk to Michelle and Ron about and see if that's something that they still wish that he does. I, I offered to do it once our previous director left, and I think that if he would have been there, he would have gone and done it if it was asked of him. But, um, but once, once our new director starts, I would think that that might be something that you might want to talk to them about.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Notice I just inserted the word trail, because that's a very important part of our recreation facilities nowadays.
Remember that whole, Tom.
Questions up there, miss?
Well, you're getting back to that same flag, you said, about a while ago. But we're going to talk about the money later, but income which shall be used for parks.
Yeah, it's not bold, sir.
It's all over.
That's tough to recognize and remember.
Just adding trails in there. Yeah, we do accept trail grants right now.
Well, he's focusing on the S, and, and it's important to know that, yeah, that is already in there. And so, we need to make note of it if we continue and come up with a new draft.
Yeah.
Whether that's changed or not, but.
Yes, and parks.
It's current, I am careful.
And then, uh, the third bullet on that screen, uh, annual training and updates for all members. I also added the commission and the court, because we're, we're responsible for giving them as much guidance as we can, and, uh, we're interested, we're interested in being present and precision trained as well. And then next to the last bullet, it's already in there, it says- Yes, sir.
We definitely want the last one under.
The board should provide annual training and updates for all members, and I, and the commission and the court. Means that we all will sit down and get some training about, uh, proper operations.
I think it's up to the director to decide what kind of training the members get, not the commission and the court.
Well, it says the board shall provide-
The board shall.
Yeah, not us, the board.
We've got the commission and court in our form.
Because we need to receive some training as well, as they receive training.
And some of it could be, I mean, that could, that could cover things like KCO training and, and League of Cities. Yeah, that, that falls into that category.
And I would add one word. The board shall provide annually budgeted training, so that we can have debates about the money. Budgeted training and updates for members. Because you can get into ten thousand dollars with the way it's written right now.
For training?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I, but keep in mind, um, I'm trying to think carefully about how I say things, okay? I'm going to try this one out, give it to anybody. When we start funding Parks and Rec to the level to where they can receive training annually without, we're going to be in a budgetary crunch, then we'd have to worry about that. Right now, they're just ready to get in bold for training updates and stuff. And, and adding commission and quarters to me is that, uh, we're just, we're the decision makers about the things that they're trying to do. So I think it's important for us to receive training as well. I've just finished eight years on the city commission, and I'll be honest with you, I've never at KLC or any place else got any training about how to operate parks and rec. I've gotten lots of opportunities to be informed about how to spend money for parks and rec and buy materials and things like that, but not really any training about the proper operations of the park. But again, that's an initial, that's in bold, and, uh, I don't know if that's a J H or if that's one of them or somebody else. But I have a bunch of notes when I sit down to do this from all the things that we've been seeing.
And Tom, following your, your thought here, I think that actually was covered up on another bullet, where it talked about the board or the director shall come before and provide financial information, if I'm understanding you.
I'm uncomfortable without the word budgeted in there, simply because, uh, it's a broad paintbrush. They will be delighted to persuade us that we can go and get training somewhere in the state by adding the commission and the court, and that might be a sap to, uh, getting their budget approved. I hate to think that way, but it's the old Pentagon theory of throw it in there and see what happens. I would like the word budgeted in there as well, because this is a new bullet.
That's going to be in the Parks and Rec budget, that they budget for.
Yeah, this will have to come out of their budget.
I understand, but we grant that budget.
Right, but I mean, they still are dependent upon what we grant to be able to get that done within their budget.
Okay, I think that's the last bullet on the draft. With just three and a half pages gone, uh, some brief review, a walk through our ordinances.
Can you get everybody a copy of, of saying?
Can I get everybody a copy of saying?
Yep.
Yeah, I have one copy, I have one copy here.
Well, I think, uh, I think maybe if we could get the updated copy that we kind of discussed, that some notes were being taken on. That, that'd be fantastic.
I agree.
I can see in your copy of what was presented there, uh, it'd take a little while to walk through what Donald has taken notes on. What I would do is just put in brackets or put in highlighted areas the things that we discussed tonight as possible changes. Because indirectly, we've not changed anything at all on this draft tonight, if I, if you're me seriously right. I do have to sometimes, so.
That's fine as long as we get the changes.
Sir?
That's fine as long as we get the changes.
Well, you can get the whole thing. You're right, and the changes, right. Okay. Yeah, questions? Go ahead, you got a question?
Well, my other suggestion, because again, going back to my continued point about the funding agreement, is the critical piece in all of this, and, and the same thing with the, with the master plan. Again, I keep saying we want to have the best system that we can afford to have. And I appreciate the mayor's point on clarification that those are goals and objectives. And that's, that's what a master plan is. It, it gives you something to shoot for, to move forward. Will we ever get there? Hopefully, and then also, maybe not. But that is a clear way that we want to move. And I've always been one that believes in order to know how to get there, you've got to know where you're going. And that's, now we kind of know where we're trying to go, and how we get there is a whole nother animal. And again, I also believe that, that a lot of the benchmark communities that are referenced in the master plan have much better and deeper pockets than we have in this community. So I'm not, I don't want to hide that either. So I think that's clear and needs to be acknowledged and recognized.
Well, to the point of reiterating Jason's recommendation that we get data on those fourteen other parks.
Sure.
And, and to, to go, I mean, we reference the master plan a lot.
Yeah.
And I, I had this discussion earlier with someone, and just because there's a plan out there, doesn't mean we have to love every part of it.
That's right, right.
I made the, I made the point that, you know, if I go to a doctor and says he, he thinks I should have something done, I'm happy to look for a second opinion, uh, you know, and so just because it says it in the plan, doesn't mean we have to do it.
That's right.
So, um, I, I'm not, I'm not, this is not scripture for me, so.
All right. I agree. It's a guide. This has been a guide, so.
It's, it, I, I-
It's a process.
And my, my point earlier was, we take this as a person, you know, from outside the community, mix it with what we know about the community, because, you know, we, we have a better understanding. You know, the people that put this together, the same people that put the jail together, the jail study together.
Well, you, you had four hundred different participants in that study, most of which were from around the county.
Okay, understand.
I'd like to have that clarified, because I've had dozens of people come to me from my area, and not a one of them was queried on this. And I think the master plan mentioned school system. Did anything go to Boil County schools when it was going out into the county? Because I don't think it was stated that way.
Yeah, it, it went through all the school systems.
But the point is, they didn't feel like they were contacted.
At, at, at this stage in the game, we have a potential roadmap that may be invited by, may not be invited by. The, the question is that we have a Parks and Rec department, and a board, and a new director that is sitting on the edge of their seat, waiting for us to give them some direction. And getting this done will be the direction. They're going to come to us with lots of proposals about how to spend the money. And, and they're going to come with a lot of proposals about recommendations for money. But we got to be prepared to say that to them, this is how we want to do it. So I'll read, they'll go, I said, what kind of money they're asking for? Whether it's for training or for new equipment or capital expenditures, or whatever it is, we, we got to be set in a stage for it.
Well, we also have to be listening, sir. And I think part of that is we can take planning and zoning as our key-
Yes, that's great.
-part here. Steve Hunter's come into this community and done, and has done some great things, and cleaned up a lot of things.
Yes.
So, you know, a, as you stated, you know, we don't have much training on Parks and Rec. So if we've hired a person from outside of this community that has experience on Parks and Rec, and from what I understand, you know, a very good touristy family area, we should actually allow him to be part of this process as well. Because, you know, we might be beating a lot of dumb stupid things here that he can say, well, you guys don't even need that in there. And then we run it through council to figure out whether it's needed or not. But back to my point on this, Brenton O'Carroll also said that we need to build a five-hundred-person jail with the opportunity to have seven-hundred people. And I can tell you, that's not, that's not needed in this town. Uh, you know, that, that's recommendations, it's not.
Oh, yeah.
So.
And, and one very major point, uh, I think we'll move to the public here in a moment, but one very major point that is not in any way in this draft is a single entity, city or county, a single entity employed by the city or county, having hiring, firing, and all control over whatever we end up deciding on. Are we clear on that being out?
Well, no.
Well, wait, wait, wait. Oh, I can't believe you said that. I'm going to beat this over. I thought we did, we discussed that, very generally.
I don't know.
You all said no to that, didn't you?
Yes, we did.
Well, why don't we go back and open it up again then?
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that it is not there.
I came back with a proposal, it's already on the table. All right, I ordered this, this with some modifications. Now, since you brought that up, I've been beat up to death about that, because I've been accused of forcibly takeover of park system by the city commission. And that's a blatant, you know what? Yeah, somebody brought that discussion, that item to us. We're the bad guy. So let's not even touch that, because it's all about jointly. You all, I thought, just shut that one down. Yes, sir.
All right. Can I go back to, I don't know, you all might have heard me say something about the funding agreement before.
What?
True. Could you resist yourself? Right. I'm going to get it, man. Well, do my coach thing. You got to get it over and over again, until they get it. So the funding agreement is, again, the critical piece for the-
Service.
Service agreement. And what I would suggest is, in addition to letting us digest what we've already been presenting, which thank you, Mr. Atkins, for that, um, presentation, um, I would suggest that we have Michelle and Mary and the judge and the mayor get together and talk about coming up with some recommendations about what this, uh, funding agreement can look like. And maybe the both attorneys, if need be, but I don't know that they need to be there for the initial conversation. Because again, I go back to the budget that is presented for this year, and has those points that I already mentioned about Millennium Park, Operation Parks and Rec, the fitness center, the pool, that are the important issues that we also need to be deciding on in this budget process. And I'm sure they're probably already meeting, or hopefully will be meeting. And then the other line that is in here already is, it's listed as eight thousand, which is auxiliary parks. And so again, that line is already in the current budget submitted by Parks and Rec. And so, you know, that's where I think we need to have them work out and talk through what that looks like. And then whether we come back jointly, or we just come back independently and talk about that is, is where I think the rubber really meets the road in all of this.
Well, when you talk about funding, I do have a question, and, and Steve, you might be able to help me out, and Mary, you might be able to help me out with this. Since, since J H just brought it back to the table as a, as a joint part, which, which I like, uh, you know, to an extent, are, are outside entities allowed to also fund this Parks and Rec venture? And the one I'm thinking of specifically, and I'm probably going to get, get, get an issue with this, but would, would an entity like CBB be able to help with funding?
Yes, they would be able to.
Okay.
And, and that would be, you know, a joint venture. It would be probably more, uh, a profit for discussion in the event that there was a restaurant sales tax that was applicable in the city of Danville, and there was actually money to be had. I mean, CBB wouldn't be in a position to partner financially yet. But should, should a funding mechanism come into play, that would allow, they could be a vital partner.
So, so the reason I ask is that, you know, it always, we always talk about the, the, you know, the Millennium Park brings in tourism. And, and so the hotels are benefiting from that, and so there's a, there's a hotel tax. And I didn't, I didn't know if, if that's allowed or not, if we can ask of that to have some of that budget, I mean, some of the money that's brought in on the hotel tax to be utilized for Parks and Rec as well. I mean, because if, if we're looking for money, and if we're looking to spend money, and the hotel tax is a direct result of, of this park or part of it, I, I would just think that there might be an opportunity to help launch.
As simply as I can, that they are a potential partner.
Okay.
Period.
Thank you.
Um, I, I think one other thing, just as I may, I jot down a few. I think it's, I think it's a role of council, not only to, to advocate, but also to be solution oriented, and to mediate, and to find common ground, and where both sides can agree. And I think, I think there are some things that we have strong- And I think I think there are some things that we have strong common ground about. One is that parks are a passion in this community. I mean, whatever side of each particular point has been mentioned, there's passion behind it for a park system that has vitality. The second thing I think that's abundantly clear is that the current joint ordinance needs a rewrite. Period. It needs a rewrite, so we're going to have to look at those. Now, what that looks like is going to be contingent upon a couple of essential questions. But I think the Reader's Digest version of the policy questions to be answered tonight are rather simple. And they are this. One, does the city and county want to operate a joint board for all parks? Or a joint board for Millennium Park? To me, that is question A. in the decision tree. If it is a joint system for all parks, then our ordinance rewrite will look a certain way. In the event that the policy decision is, let's have a joint board for the operation of Millennium Park, that's fine. As an auxiliary point to that, we could have a service agreement for the other ventures that may include something like the pool or trails or whatever we may or may not want it to include. The point is, I don't think we're walking to the edge of a cliff and we have to say, this happens or nothing. There's a hybrid system here that could work and work to everyone's advantage, all by elevating parks to the passion that's evident here tonight. So if the joint board is just for Millennium Park, so be it. That's not a bad policy decision. It's simply a policy decision. And then we could have a service agreement that could or could not include other auxiliary parks, including the pool. To me, that is a rational outlier or solution to the conversation that's been had here tonight. I should also mention that it's the path of the most successful joint ventures that the city and county have. One of the best joint ventures we have, I think, is solid waste management. The county operates that, and the city joins by agreement for funding of it. It is a it is a county operation for which the city contributes. And I would say it's one of our best joint ventures. Others may disagree, but I think it's probably the hallmark of success of joint ventures. We also replicated that with 911, which had been a big question mark in this community for decades. And we found common ground and solution through the development of a service agreement that answered the questions. And then, for all intents and purposes, has worked smoothly since then. I would propose that, again, if the decision is made for Millennium Park to be the focus of the joint Parks and Rec board, that we try to replicate a service agreement for any park that the county wishes to include. Or that the county wishes to have the city participate in, which may or may not include constitutions where, for instance. The point being, when the foundation we have in place now is not on rock. It is very sandy. And what you see is when you don't have a firm foundation, it ebbs and flows with the wind and the rain. And it creates the rub and the tension that has been experienced too long in the community. The solution, in my mind, is not complicated before us. It's a rewrite of the ordinance based upon your decision on one key policy decision. After that, we either rewrite the ordinance for Millennium, for the entire park system, or we rewrite the ordinance for Millennium Park and have a service agreement and include whatever you decide to include. To me, that is the roadmap to success in putting this issue to bed.
And so my question about that, and my question in general is, what about programming? I mean, the majority of the programs happen in in Millennium Park, but they also happen at Bunny Davis and at the swimming pool and maybe a few other parks. So is that included in a service agreement?
It could it could be included in the service agreement. I think the, once the big decision is made, the big policy decision that we've talked about, then we have to see the implications of that. If the county, for instance, chooses to focus solely on Millennium Park and we rewrite the ordinance for that, then it is most likely that the city is going to need, have a need to develop some type of internal parks coordination for its auxiliary parks. And then that is where, once that system is in place, you would have the basis for a service agreement for any type of coordination between Parks and Service, Parks and Recreation Director and a city department head essentially for planning and programming of auxiliary parks. I mean, to me, that is very doable. And I think we have to get away from the fact of whatever way we go is there's is demonized. Because you have two rational solutions that can provide a vital service. We just have to make that decision and get over it, just like we've done with solid waste management and just like we've done with the 911 system.
And I agree with, and you said that very well, and I agree with all your points. I think that, I guess, the other thing I would ask us to do is, and I think this has been a great meeting and we've had a lot of really good discussion here, is get the Parks and Rec Director in place and part of this process, give them time. I don't know that there's any reason to ramrod this through in any hurry because I do think the ordinance needs to be worked over and addressed. I think those key decision points that you're referencing need to be addressed as well. But I think we need to, you know, obviously, we're in the middle of the budget process, so we need to work that together. I think we need to move ahead this budget cycle with our joint planning and zoning commission as constituted. You know, again, reading the directions and going back and fixing some of the things that we should have been doing, that we're not doing, like having ex officio members on the board. And then continue to continue to address this as we as we move forward and get the new Parks and Rec Director.
Well, I think you're right. I think we need to wait until the new Park Director gets in place. Meanwhile, I think we need to be funding this park as we have been 50/50 on Millennium Park.
Right. I think we just proceed this year as we, is that your, is that your mic drop moment?
Your teeth fall out of your mouth. Hey, I'd like to call on Mr. Atkins.
I don't, I don't want to get into discussions.
We're not going to.
Well, we, we, we're from the public.
Right. I think that's, I think that's right. Before we go there, I got one, sir, go ahead, sir.
No, I'm okay.
Well, while while we're here, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't take an opportunity to call on the Parks and Rec Chairman, Bryce Carey, to kind of illuminate, share with this this new selection, how it came about, and what you see with it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have hired John Bell in the St. Louis area. We're really excited about him. And yes, the resume, experience, certification, the degree, all that stuff to go along with it. But you, I would be remiss to tell you that we didn't hire him just because of that. We hired him because he's the type of person that he is, and that's what made him the complete package. Now, what we went after and what we what we were, I don't want to say we hired based off of it, but we used the master plan a lot as as a guiding tool and a reference point with making this hire. And we tried our best to kind of find someone that would fit in there with that. Now, without getting into the to the funding issues or anything, you know, the main reason that we hired him is is his ideas for growth and how he could grow the our Parks and Rec to get to be the best, you know, we want our Parks and Rec program to be the best in the state of, you know, similar size. And we feel he can do that. He can, you know, acclimate all of our other parks should the funding be available. And that that's y'all's decision. But but just briefly, that's what we were after whenever we were hiring a new person. And, you know, he wants to be in this area. He has family in the eastern Kentucky. He has children in college that are close. So he's wanting to come here to this area. He he scoped us out, I don't have any problems telling, he scoped us out. He was here a few days before our interview, came in our office in a disguise, asking questions. Not really in disguise, but, you know.
So he's shopping you?
Yes, he was doing all that stuff. He's very committed, pretty much, but that is noted. So he he really wants to be here, and and we couldn't ask for a better person to be in charge of our Parks and Rec Department.
Board, Mary.
What's that?
Entire Board, Mary.
Have they all met him? No, sir. No, Justice Subcommittee interviewed him, and he's still out of state. So we're hoping to get him in before, he starts on May 6th, I don't know if I mentioned that. He starts on May 6th, hoping to get him in before that's where the whole board can meet him and whoever else would like to join.
Well, thank you for all your hard work on that, not personally, and I think speak for everybody else. We're looking forward to meeting him and getting his ideas and energy. And I'm sure he will be a cohesive element as we move forward with all of this.
Yes, and one more thing. I am on the agenda for the commission meeting on the 13, 14, 15, and the S K S report. I can't remember those dates, the second week or the third week or May, whatever. But we are on the agenda to bring him and introduce him. And you all have opportunities to ask questions if you haven't met him before then.
Mr. Perry, you do have two new members here at Woodford today.
Yes, sir.
Two new board members.
Yes, sir. They're at our last board meeting.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. And, yep, appreciate all your hard work. So with that said, I think it's time for the public input.
I'd like to make one little adjustment if you don't mind. We have a rare opportunity tonight here from a former elected official who was in with most of this discussion in these ordinance that were created. I'd like a historical perspective, if anybody would be interested in it, from Judge Wilder, Tony Wilder, when he was here, how many years ago? I think you offer a historical perspective that we all benefit from. I don't need a historical man. Get up.
You know, I I did come tonight because I'm interested, and I've been reading, very interested, the report, the reporting on the meetings. And and I'm not here tonight to speak for the county. And I'm not here tonight to speak for the Kentucky Council of Area Development Districts that I work for now. I'm just citizen Tony tonight. And and I actually came, I was just, I was concerned about the possibility of one government having complete control of the park system. I was I was concerned about some misconceptions that have seemed to to evolve over time since we built the park and some things have forgotten, particularly about the county's involvement. And I felt compelled to come and speak to that because I thought the county had been more than a full partner. But after hearing tonight, let me offer this perspective. You have to remember, Kevin, just what I mentioned a while ago. When that, when we built the park and we made that conversion and that partnership to focus on that 126 acres, you got to remember what Parks and Recreation was to both governments. It was basically a programmatic. It, you were paying for the programs to deliver to the kids that would participate. If it happened at Jackson Park, which it did before Millennium, and other places it happened there. What we never did, and that's what I was mentioning, when we did convert over and it was understood they would go to pass it, our focus on programmatic activity went to the Millennium Park. And maintenance and capital improvements was kind of understood to stay with the city. And we did White's Park, or we helped Junction, or we helped Parable. That's what has happened here, and that's what's causing the consternation. I mean, it's obvious, you know, having to spend county funds on capital improvements of a neighborhood park that has nothing to do with programmatic activities of the Parks and Recreation Department. This is the key that I've observed here that's missed. It was always focused on programmatic, the programs, the little leagues, everything, and the basketball leagues. We never, as I was judged, almost 16 years, 1993 to 2008. And I had about a seven-month extra period in there. And we never paid one dime on any neighborhood park in Danville to improve a capital improvement of any kind. And we never asked you to do Parks, we never asked you to do White's or any of the county parks. That just was understood. Our focus, once we made that commit, and I think what's forgotten, and I, and I, it's implied in some of the articles, and I'm not going to denigrate anybody's opinion, anybody in the leadership of the city or county. But we, at the time, when that park was started, there's a lot of misconceptions about how we developed there. The city and county together put $2 billion, a million each, cash money to start the development of that park. It was unprecedented. It was basically unprecedented to buy the land again. And some of you remember at that time, the court I worked with was a good court. They're good people, but they weren't the most progressive. Some were, some weren't. And that was a tough, that was a tough, that was a tough call. So I'm going to tell you one of my proudest moments in public life. That's been the day that we broke ground out there at Millennium Park. And Alex Stevens was there as the mayor, and I'll never forget it. It was July of 1998. And the county, what I was really sensing and feeling compelled to talk about was there was a little less love for the county here in some of this discussion. And I'm hearing it from my folks in the city, my friends. And you got to remember, at the time we did this, we had just brought online a complete new county division at EMS, a very expensive, important county division. At the same time, in late 94, 95, we started that. We had then had to move right into talking about building a new $8 million jail. We broke, we actually broke ground on it in 97 and opened it in 98. We broke ground on the park, July of 98, we opened the jail, October of 98. All of that was going on. And we committed a million dollars, plus we were part of getting grants and other things, state grants. And we built that park. Now, at the time we did it, some leadership, the elected leadership in the city wanted to do a big bond issue. And I didn't think that was the way to go, particularly because what we were facing in those other public things we were doing, jails and EMS and that kind of. And it worked out where we were able to pay as we go, put the $2 million in, we both had surpluses. And the taxpayers owed nothing on that park. And we have, and we're all, all of us sit here, absolutely think that is a jewel. That is an absolute hallmark of working together. It's right out there, tangibly, you can go out there, I go out there every night, I'm on. So I just wanted to talk about that. Again, I hope you can work this out because nobody wants to see this division.
Oh, we're not working that.
Yeah. It's just, and, you know, the city and county have worked together, the, you know, a lot of this is evokes some of this talk about merged governments and all that kind of thing, which really doesn't apply to a community our size. And we went through this before. So I hope that doesn't start up again because it doesn't, it's not applicable for us. But Parks and Recreation is too important. But again, I think what we've missed here, the focus has always been on programs. And we're getting hung up now because there's a potential of doing capital improvements and that kind of thing on parks that that don't have anything to do with the Parks and Recreation Department.
Right. And that's where, that's that's exactly the point, Judge, and I appreciate you making that because it is programmatic. And that's where I think we got to get the Parks and Rec Director in place. Because one of the things that happened is we really have maxed out our programmatic areas of of Millennium Park at this point in time. And so now we've got to find out how we can program and better utilize all of the Parks and Rec system throughout the whole county, which includes the city of Danville and parks. And so you're absolutely right. It is programmatic funding. And because, and part of the beautiful park, it is our jewel, and all of those things are so true. One of the limitations of Millennium Park is there's also a good percentage of the parkland that is not programmatic, other than for trails and and mowing. And so it takes a good flat surface to be programmatic. And we we are limited in the programmatic space in Millennium Park. So that's one of our challenges that we have.
Well, to an extent, we're limited. We have to be more resourceful, I think, is really what it comes down to. We need to make sure we're utilizing the taxpayer dollars properly. You know, just because we have some wants doesn't mean there are needs.
No, and I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, though, if we're talking about programmatic.
Right.
We have to, you know, in order to do the thing that you want to do, we just have things for young people to do and adults in the community. We have to, with our Parks and Rec Directors' guidance.
Yeah.
Find those, how we program the spaces that we have.
But creativity is part of that as well.
Sure.
And so I think that's, again, we we've got this 30,000-foot view of what we think is going on at parks. You're right, we need the director in there, we need the board in there to kind of guide us like all the boards do throughout all of our partnerships or whatever. But, you know, I hear talk of of building this and building that. We don't need to. We can start small and then grow and then utilize those resources as we go along.
One other thing I wanted to mention, I didn't know a new director had been hired. However, I would just say this, in fact, and I've not met the individual at all, is that I think you do, whomever is in that position, a huge disservice without answering these looming policy decisions. You're setting up an individual new to the community for utter failure. On your part, if you don't, as elected officials, step up and answer that essential policy question and then allow that question to be answered so that we can put the foundation so expectations are clear, and then it allows that individual to have success in programming. But without an answer to that question. But without an answer to that question, the rub continues, and the likelihood of success is diminished.
Which, which is why I asked the question about programming, because when I hear Max Schuss and Judge saying, "We only wanna spend our money in Millennium Park", but what does that look like? Does that include programming? Is, is that only capital expenditures or maintenance for Millennium Park? I, I mean, that's, that's what my question is. When you, when we talk about Parks and Rec, we're talking about Millennium, Jackson, programs, we're talking about baseball, basketball, cheerleading, karate, ballet, there's all kinds of things that are going on in Parks and Rec. So it, it includes all of that. The discussion should include all of that, but when, they're not all at Millennium Park. It's not possible to have some of those things at Millennium Park. So that is my genuine question. When you say Millennium Park, and you only wanna spend your money there, what does that mean? Because those kids are Parks and Rec participants, but it's happening in Millennium Park, but it's not only happening in Millennium Park, it's happening in the elementary school gyms across the whole county. It's, it's happening at Bunny Davis, it's, it's happening at Jackson Park, it's... So that's what I wanna know, is what, what is, what does that look like?
Mr. Dexter's comments are quite reassuring tonight that we can do it one of two ways, and I'm confident that what we come up with in the next week and days can achieve that, so I think we've made great progress tonight.
Yeah, and that's my point to, to Mr. Dexter.
Well, I'm still, I'm still in trouble understanding your question, though. I mean, it, it's not like we're starting a new Parks and Rec Department, these things are already going on, and so I'd much rather, I mean, yes, I think it's vital that we answer this question, how we're gonna move forward, but we're moving already. It just, we're gonna move at a, at a faster pace at some point, once we have some of those, those questions answered, but I would much rather, and this is just Jason speaking, I would much rather have input from an individual that says, I mean, I don't wanna rush into anything right now and then have him say, "Well, that's not how I do this," and then we have to redo everything. So I, I think it's vital to get the director's input, and, and then we can answer a lot of those questions, but what we have to do right now is we have to move that forward a little bit here, um, in, in order to make anything happen.
The city has been saying this oftentimes, but policy, best policy is made absent of individuals in mind. You make policy decisions best upon a conceived good, absent a particular individual. So while I agree wholeheartedly that the influence and ideas of a new director will be critical for success, the looming policy decisions, you're charged with deciding as elected. We don't tend not to hire individuals to draft policy.
Of course, sure.
But the input is critical to success.
Yeah.
However, once that big question's answered, I think the director has to be on the ground and instrumental in saying, in the development of a service agreement, what that's gonna look like. Would you answer question A?
I agree with you, but...
Well, we have answered question A, is that we're moving forward with the joint Parks and Rec Board. And that's, that's what this person has been hired coming to town knowing.
That's a good one.
Look, Mike, over the years, we, this park's been existence since, what, the one that broke ground in ninety-eight, correct? We broke down in ninety-eight, we opened in ninety-nine. And we've had a director that was doing a good job until we started micromanaging. City started to take over, and then, uh, Mr. Scott wanted everybody to answer directly to him, and then next thing you knew, we're in trouble.
Phil, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna let you, I'm not gonna let that...
I'm not, I'm not gonna do that.
This is the first time I've heard about, uh, y'all, they, they...
Phil, I love you today, but brother, that's a gross mischaracterization.
That is part of why we are in this position right there.
I just, and I, and I wanna add something to the, how you want to say, the negative side of the mix. I think Millennium Park and the Bunny Davis Center, maybe a trail or two, of all those constables, well, not justices for a park, well, not constables for a park, you take all those things that are listed on that frame I put up there, there has not been a, any money that you guys have put into Parks and Rec to use for capital improvements in those places that were listed there.
We want it that way.
I know, but I wanna be sure you understand that, though, because I think people are thinking that money given to Parks and Rec by the county and the city is going to capital improvements in those places, and it's not. Anytime something's done with capital improvements in those other places, it's a, it's a special request that Parks and Rec are... Someone comes straight to the city to make. It's not being used with the regular contribution that's been given to what you call the Millennium Park.
Right.
So that's, just get that out, the issue we understand.
And as a path forward to mayor, Judge, would it, would it be advisable, and I'm happy to do this if, if it's, if it's the temperament of the both bodies, would it be helpful in to progress the conversation to actually draft two different things? One ordinance rewrite that simply includes a joint board for Millennium Park. One ordinance rewrite that includes the entire system of parks, along with, I would say, uh, more of a bare-bones type of service agreement. Again, that would have to be heavy on the draft end, because we don't know what, I don't wanna spend hours developing a service agreement if we decide to go with the other option. But would that be helpful in furthering the conversation at future court or commission meetings to decide? At some point, we're gonna have to decide which way to go.
Yeah.
I like the idea.
I do, I, I agree, I agree. But are we good with that for right now? We do have an ordinance, and we do have something set up so that this, this Parks and Rec Board can function along with the director. Bryce, you had your hand up, did you have one more question?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, uh, Mr. Bell, we've been sending in, uh, budget stuff, you know, things of that nature, so if there's anything that you all would like for him to review before May sixth, he will be glad to do it, we can gladly send that out.
Mr. Kaywood has been very patient. I realized in the meeting, Mr. Bell, we invited him to come in and take our Parks and Rec and move it to the next level. Without his vision, without his input, we're not doing him part of it by then. So we've got, hi- his input is very important to us. I'll read to you what's on the website of the Parks and Rec Department. Danville Ball County Parks and Recreation Department was established to provide recreational activities for the community to supervise development, new parkland, and to maintain existing park facilities. The nuts and bolts of that is the Parks and Rec Committee works for all the parks in this county's boundaries. Now, at what level is what you, you, you've identified that they can be separated, and I think that probably we get, uh, more agreement with the separation. But let's not forget all of the parks in the whole county. Everybody pays the county taxes, they're entitled, they're entitled, okay. Mr. Hendricks.
I'd just like to point out something that's, I guess, for lack of a better word, reality. I think Mr. Dexter has hit the point on the head, you've got two decisions to make, and I personally like the one that, that states the, uh, Millennium Park is the primary park, and that's the one you work on. Now, you can have a service agreement for the other parks if that's the case, and that, the reason I think that is this. For the last five years when I was on the court, and I'm here just as a private citizen and a taxpayer tonight, as you all know, I have nothing to, to do as far as voting, but for the last five years, I was on the Parks and Rec Committee, I was on the Ad-Hoc Committee for three to four years. Some thinks we got a lot done, some people think we didn't get nothing done, and I take real opposition to that, and I think the mayor would too, I think we've got a lot done. But about three and a half years ago, and the reason I think, this is why I think we should, forget this part right here, I think we should go with Mr. Dexter's plan, draw it up, ordinance that we take care of Millennium Park, period, and then do a service agreement if you wanna do any other parts, and the reason being, for three and a half years on the Ad-Hoc Committee, we tried to get more money for parks, and it was Millennium Park, that was the only one we were concerned with. That's all we worked on. I think the mayor would agree, and sometimes he seconded it when I brought the motion up the first time, that we, as a city and county, needed to kick in another fifty thousand dollars each, a hundred thousand. And the reason we did that is because the past board and the past director brought to us a binder about that big, right here in this room, about five years ago, if you recall, stating the board at that time and the director were recommending nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars worth of improvements that needed to be done in Millennium Park, didn't. Now, that was roughly five years ago. In that five years, we were only able, as a group, both parties, to come up with three hundred thousand. It's all we spent on their recommendations, which these folks had been there for twenty-some years, they knew more about what we needed in Millennium Park than any of the rest of us put together. And that was one of the reasons I would never agree with Brad Stinner-Carroll's study, because we had our own people telling us what we needed. We only did three hundred thousand, so we got six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, and we already know these to be done just in Millennium. Now, if we could only come up with three hundred, why are we even talking about these multi-million dollar projects? They're not worth a fight, or, there's just not enough money for it. So in, in an effort to get Millennium Park up to where we, we would all like to have it, why don't we concentrate on that for now? And if, two years from now, we have made all those six, other six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars worth of improvements that we need, then we can come up and say, "Okay, now we might be able to extend here," or have a service agreement if it works out that way. But if you don't get one of those two things done, as Mr. Dexter pointed out, if you don't get one of those two things done at this, at this meeting or a very quick meeting after this, then we're just spinning our wheels again, and five years from now, we're gonna be on the same track as we were five years ago. So I'm just saying, we don't have enough money to bite off all the Thai right now. Let's take one piece of it, and the biggest, my main piece to me is Millennium Park. So that would be my suggestion.
So with that said, I, I'd like to propose that we let Councilor Dexter come up with two drafts that circulate that amongst all of us. I don't wanna put a date out there right now, which I think would be premature, but clearly, we need to digest both drafts, come back together and discuss them together, and come to a conclusion. And I'd like to have that conclusion done, but we're gonna have to have a meeting, but I'd like to have that conclusion done by June one. That means, that means we gotta have a meeting in the interim?
And, uh, Mayor, we may need another joint meeting, however, I think it's important now that the digesting of the potential options happen in each legislative body. So I think that the critical decisions to determine the final path forward will be with the court and the commission. Largely, I think, with the court, because the city has, has parks, that it's gonna have to maintain either separately or jointly. So I think the, once the two options are presented to the court, and they have due, can complete their due diligence in discussion, then I, I would think that they would either pass one of those or either have a tentative recommendation for approval upon a future joint meeting, if we still need to iron things out. If we go the route where we have a service agreement, there is gonna be a need for future joint meetings. However, if the focus is primarily Millennium Park, it may be very possible that it's simply implemented without a future joint meeting.
Right, I agree with you.
Before I forget, I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, Judge Wilder for, for joining us tonight, and, and those of you all don't know this, and he probably wouldn't want me to tell it anyway, but I'm going to, um, Tony's a lucky man to be with us tonight. He suffered a cardiac event, what, Tony, six weeks ago?
February twenty-fourth.
And, and it's been a cardiac event, it's called a widow maker, and because of our fine EMS, and they happen to be right there, and everything just clicked the way it was supposed to, and so, um, and instead of being at his funeral, we're here with you today, we're glad for that, sir.
I'd like to say that the trail system aided in his getting better, because if he weren't in shape, I'm talking about Millennium Park, sorry. Because he walks it every day.
I'd like for you to speak about...
He walks it every day.
I'd like for you to get up and just tell us about what kinda service you had from EMS. Get up, tell us what happened there.
Hey, Jack, and just to your point, sir.
Yes, sir.
You brought up, and Jamie's brought up funding, you brought up funding, and it was brought up here tonight, the one thing we really need to, as citizens as well, is, I'm sorry, Mayor, but the city is pushing a restaurant tax, that's just...
Stop, stop, stop!
Nope.
This is a state issue, it has nothing to do with the city.
Your attorney brought it up, so...
It's a state issue.
Let me, let me, let me be clear here.
But I'm telling you...
I was asked a question, and I said, if funding, a funding mechanism existed such as a restaurant tax, there could be a partnership. I was not advocating, it's not my role to advocate, I don't do that, policy decisions are the legislative...
It is a legislative issue at the state level, period.
Sir, I think it's important to understand that, that citizens are really not looking to be taxed anymore, and so we, we need to, yeah, we need to make sure that, and I think that's gonna be a stopping point, is if, if, if we're looking to pay for, for these bigger, more expensive things that, that are in here, you know, tax increases are not, should not be on the table, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
We, we've all heard from very limited folks in the communities, anybody else in the community?
Yeah, anybody else in the, are you fine folks that have sat here for two hours?
Please.
I just have a real quick question, 'cause I'm a little confused, it's kind of what you were talking about, Denise. If we're talking about the county, this is, I'm, I'm not sure I understand. We've got a board, a Parks and Rec Board, that oversees all of Parks and Rec, right? And Parks and Rec, right, occurs not just at Millennium Park.
Yes.
So with this agreement, would it be that you all would fund only the programs that occur in Millennium Park, and you would only provide funding for maintenance and that kinda thing, just for Millennium Park? Or would it be for, does the board do Parks and Rec, which is all over, it's such a, it's a big umbrella? So we're talking about the umbrella of Parks and Rec, but then we're talking about specifically the nugget of Millennium Park? And so I'm confused as to how we're talking about the, the governmental piece of it with the board, if it oversees all of Parks and Rec, is the board only going to see Millennium Park? So it, it just sounds like we're talking about two different things, or maybe I missed something.
Yeah, let me try to take us to that one more time, I did. And just to, to point out the current budget structure, going back to that, the current budget structure is in, really is in ma, in three main buckets, let's just look at it that way, it's in three main buckets. There's the Millennium Park and operation part of the budget, which the operation part includes the salaries for all the people that work in Parks and Rec. So that's the Millennium Park operations budget, and there also is currently a fitness center budget line, and that includes the operation of the Bunny Davis Center.
Right.
And then there's a, a line that includes the pool.
Right.
And so that's the operation of the pool. So in that, those three buckets, it pretty much covers the operation of the programming of the Parks and Rec system currently. It doesn't include anything for the mowing, um, any other thing.
And I'm not even talking about that. I'm only talking about programming.
Right, so that's all included currently under the Parks and Rec Board agreement at this point.
Do they only want to fund events, or for anything that happens in Millennium Park?
How much happens outside of Millennium Park, as far as programming?
But we need to know what they mean.
I mean, let me, let me take that back.
I didn't mean to open up a whole other...
No, 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 you're, you're fine, I think it's a good point.
It just was confusing to me that we've got the big overarching umbrella with the board overseeing all of Parks and Rec, which doesn't happen just at Millennium Park, but we're talking about just funding...
It happens in all the gyms, as Denise pointed out, it happens in all the gyms.
So these, these parks that are all counted, no programming really happens in these parks outside of Millennium Park?
It, it appears to me that this introduction of all these neighborhood parks has just occurred, correct? Where the, in terms of speaking under the umbrella of Parks and Rec.
No, we're, we're talking about parks.
It's never been discussed.
I'm saying there's no...
So when you say all inclusive, all these parks, they've never been parked.
We've never mentioned it.
Yes.
So my question was, why bring it up now? Are y'all doing some working on having money?
But I, well, but all of these parks are in the county, and so my tax money, well, I mean...
Reason we are done is we went back to, to, to the baseline. The baseline was the ordinances that both bodies passed in, in, back in the nineties. So we didn't wanna take anything for granted, we wanted to take the ordinances as they're originally structured. were originally structured back then. We wanna change it, that's the decision we made. We didn't wanna, we didn't want to be presumptuous, that's why that's there.
And is there actual written agreement, like what Tony was talking about, when, when all of those city parks came offline, and it was just focused on Millennium Park, is there an agreement that actually spells out who's responsible for what? That needs to be made. That needs to be in writing, so it's crystal clear.
Mr. Dexter has clarified right to us.
That's what I think he needs to be done.
Yeah. So let's, let's let Stephen do what Stephen does best, and get something to us as soon as you can, but I personally would like Judge Wood to, we'd like to have this done by June 1.
At least, I like his idea of getting it back to us.
Yeah.
The court and the commissions, let us look it over, and we can decide, we need another meeting done.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to say anything? Don, I'm gonna wrap it up by saying this. Yes, sir?
I have a request of this whole group here, based on what you're going to prepare for us. Is everybody good with sharing it with the Parks and Rec Board?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Absolutely. As Royce has mentioned, I agree with Maxer calling, that we've made some good hires in the city in some key positions, and this looks like another one, and we should not, not listen to his input, even before he gets here, before he has time to look at it, and that might be good.
Glad to have you on, glad I wanted to talk to you. Now, well, thank you, great suggestion. With that said, with that said, I think a tremendous amount of work has been done by Mr. Atkins, yes, sir, you have the final...
I just wanna add to Donald's list of additions, that we add White's Park to this list, and the rationale for listing all these parks...
You don't need to put it like parking there, that's a county park, we know that, everybody understands, a county all day.
I tend to disagree with him on that one. I want everybody to see that we talk about Parks and Rec in Danville Ball County, Kentucky, I talk about all of these places, not just one. That was the rationale for the, because you didn't see the total picture. And whether you agree with that or not, it's really not important to me, but it's there for you to see. So I'd like to add White's Park into this proposal, so...
Well, White's Park has nothing to do with that, I don't think you need to list White's Park in that. That is strictly on by the...
Excuse me, sir.
That's strictly, listen to me. It is strictly on by the county, like you all on all these other parks.
So it's Constitution Square, but it's on there.
You have nothing to do with White's Park.
I'll have, I'll, excuse me, wait a minute. I tried to be, no, I'm not gonna, I tried to be inclusive of everything that I've talked about in the county. Madison Square is up there, Millennium Park is up there, you know, Johnson City Park is up there, if anything else I've left on the list, I'd just like to have it added to the list, because it's important for me, as a member of the commission, and as a citizen of the city and the county, that we know what we're talking about, all of this, that's all I'm trying to get at. That's all I want.
All right, with that said, I think we've come a long way, and... Yes, sir?
Are you ready?
I'm ready, it's your turn.
May I make a motion before adjournment, that when we do that, that we honor John Second Open Hour in our adjournment, since we've moved greatly forward tonight.
Then I second that.
There's a motion and a second.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Have we adjourned in honor of John Open Hour? I wanna thank everybody, we are a whole lot closer to the finish line than we were a little bit ago. If I could just, if I could just keep Phil under control, and get this done.
He's already done his mic drop moment.
I thought that was tea, I swear.
We're gonna try for a game, y'all.
You'll hear more of it here.